Special meaning to order and all rise for the pledged allegiance.
Allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington's one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susan, we may have a roll call, please.
Board member Groves?
Here.
Board member Chambers?
Here.
Board member Barkis?
Here.
Board member DeVor?
Here.
And Chair Salzweil.
Here. Uh, for approval of the agenda, is that it?
Move so.
This is board?
Second.
Uh, do we need to vote on this, or can we just do all in favor of say and I?
We do.
Yeah, go through that whole thing. Okay, we'll look for, uh, roll call, please.
Board member Groves?
Yes.
Board member Chambers?
Here.
Board member Barkis?
Yes.
Board member DeVor?
Yes.
And Chair Salzweil.
Yes.
Citizens comments for items not on the agenda.
You can stand up and say something, right?
Yes. They'll have an opportunity at council, too.
Yeah, if you want to do council.
Oh.
Is regarding the council?
I don't, I don't know, I just know that I want to say.
You can go whenever you want, now or then.
Yep, just name your name and address and go ahead.
Okay. Diane, alright, my name is Diane Smith, and I live on the river 618 Lafayette. And I'm very committed to this river and the cleanup. And I was the one that wrote letters and sent letters to the Lowell Ledger and also Lowell First Look, including some pictures of the swampy-ness of the river. And I am still really committed to cleaning that river up and figuring the best way to go forward with that. Um, I have an inquiry if the city is not involved in cleaning it up. I have an inquiry, is there anything that prohibits the city from helping to clean up the river? And who determines how city funds are spent?
Thanks, I, I don't have an answer for those at this point, but we'll look into your questions.
Thank you, because I wanted these questions on the record.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Diane, I'd just like to mention, we're gonna discuss, hopefully discuss that later during the council meeting?
Yes.
So, just so you know, we'll, we'll talk more.
Perfect, now I will be right here. Thank you very much, Diane.
My name is Marty Pulaski, and I live at 604 Lafayette, I'm also on the river. Um, I hadn't talked to Diane about that, and I, I'm hoping, I was at the last meeting where you said the city couldn't be involved, I don't know if it was just financially or what. So I decided to go online and look at Grand Rapids. And I know we're not Grand Rapids, but we're not talking about taking dams out and making a white water river. But it does, right on the front page, talk about that you need involvement of the entire city. You need support of the city, whether it's financial, or hopefully our view of support that we do something about it. And it also lists the project leadership. And then it says, project partners, and City of Grand Rapids is listed as number one. So I'm hoping the role is also, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Then we'll close, citizen comments, and we'll go to new business, which is the public hearing for variance request for 810 Riverside Drive. Anybody wanna talk about it? Give up, you get your chance.
Yes, I can give a, a quick introduction, uh, we should let the applicants here, uh, give their, their presentation. So just by way of background, um, this is a variance request for 810 Riverside Drive, what they're requesting is, uh, they wanna remove the existing accessory building that's on a property and replace it with one that's bigger, um, that's larger than what's ordinarily permitted by the zoning ordinance. So they want to exceed the minimum, uh, areas, or the maximum area for the accessory building by 272 square feet, uh, which would also exceed the maximum lot coverage by eight percent. So those are the two things that they're asking for, I'm gonna let them kind of give you the background in terms of what they're asking for, and why, and all that. Uh, but that's kind of the, the gist of the application here, um, then after they make their presentation, um, and we consider any public comments specific to this request, if it is of, of the public hearing, we can walk through each of the standards for reviewing the variance that I outlined in my report. So I guess, from there, I'll turn it over to the applicants here, Kimball and Tricia, and they can give you more specifics on what they're asking for.
Yeah, I think, I appreciate all of your time. Uh, so this has been a little bit of a journey for us, as Sue already especially can, can account for. Uh, so, basically, the garage that we have, um, we can't even fit, um, our Yukon in there. Um, and I've got good working tools and things like that. Uh, we also, since we're fortunate to live along Riverside, um, have a pontoon, and, you know, kayaks, and, you know, just all this stuff. Plus, um, the house that we bought is one of the oldest ones in, in Lowell. It was built originally in 1850, and then added on to, um, probably three, at least three times, if not four. So the basement is not very usable. So what we're really trying to do is get enough, um, room for, to have a workshop, to be able to put in, um, a camper and, um, a pontoon, and build a park in there. And then on the upstairs, um, have kind of a, a family room. Um, or some for storage, but, like, exercise bikes and, um, ping pong table and, and things like that. So that's, that's the goal. Originally, I know I was asking for, that, um, should I do what we talked about?
Yeah, go ahead, yes. For, for clarification, I, I did go over Sunday to look at the actual property and see what that looks like. I just couldn't quite figure it out by that, so I went over and actually positioned and asked. We had a little conversation.
So, some of those things may change a little bit. Drawing A, um, that's what I submitted, and I was kind of encouraged to do that, to try and keep, for Andy's guidance, I'll say, to keep the amount of variance that I was asked to, the minimum that I could, to just barely work. That is still gonna be really tight. Uh, if you look down at drawing C, um, that one, the, the main structure on the ground is actually only 24 feet wide instead of 28, but then upstairs is 36, which would allow 12 more feet to be covered. Um, that'd be, you know, that one, I know I got some pushback, and prob, maybe rightly so, I don't know. Um, I like that design. Uh, it makes the upstairs work a lot better, um, and then, um, at least keeps one of the trailers to the outside, but, um, keeps it covered at least. Because I think you all know, you know, the wind comes from the west, and if you park on the, on the east side of a building like that, as you get the snow, then it's just gonna fill whatever you parked, um, to the east of that building up with snow, and that doesn't work so well. Um, B, uh, might be a good middle ground, and that one, it would be 32 feet inside, so that would have everything inside. Not as nice on the upstairs portion, but that, um, makes it not so tight of a squeeze, and would allow us, basically, to have a three-car width, be a little shy of a three-car width. So that would be over what I've asked. If I'm not allowed to ask for, you know, four more feet in width, than, um, than I know I need to go with what I, what I submitted. But, I just wanted to get your thoughts on it. I know, at least set wise, back wise, and all that, we meet all those requirements. You know, we're, we're far enough from the house, no matter what, it's still 44 feet. We're gonna be far enough off the, uh, lot line and all that.
On number C, that open is not a hole all the way through, right?
Yes, full length.
Oh, it is, okay.
So, anybody have any questions regarding the three possible choices, knowing that, I know you applied for A, uh, but in my conversations with them, if we're gonna talk about variance, can, can we look at B or C? Or just mainly what was presented?
I almost think you have to stay with what was presented, right? Because the rest is all new unless it wants to come back and.
But Andy, the standards you did were based on A, right?
Correct.
So, we would need to have Andy reevaluate and do all that. I just have a couple concerns on A.
Okay.
The way you show that upstairs, um, is this gonna be a heated building? Because you're putting a restroom in up there.
Yeah, the upstairs would be heated.
In what?
Yeah, and, and any pipes that are to be exposed, that would be heated as well. Is that an issue?
I, I was gonna refer to Andy. If we're building a storage unit, our restroom, bathroom, um, is there anything in that would, uh, say we couldn't have a restroom in there?
No, there's nothing that, that specifically prohibits that, other than you wouldn't, you know, obviously you can't live in that, or you can't have somebody using that as a unit, that's, that's the biggest concern when it comes to stuff like that. So the fact that they have one in there, it doesn't bother me as long, and you can attach this in a condition if you wanted to approve it eventually, is that it can't be used as any kind of living quarters. So if there's, you know, some refrigerators and stoves showing up in there, then that's, that's different, obviously. That's the only concern that comes up with that.
Yeah, and that's where I was kind of going with it, right?
Well, that's, that's why, and you're making a good point, that's why even on drawing C, where it had the storage room, uh, towards the front of the garage, uh, I told Susan, um, I'm not intending to even put a window in there, because I don't want you to think I'm making that into a bedroom. Um, there would be the possibility of putting, just like, in a basement or another family room, there would be the possibility of putting a microwave or a, a refrigerator up there, but I'm no spell or anything like that. It, it truly is a family just.
A hangout spot.
Yes, exactly.
So, other than that, if we can just, if we vote for it and we approve it, then I would like to see that be a deal, that it cannot become.
A bedroom now.
Yeah, I love the whole thing.
I'd like to say, I also visited with Kimball and stepped it off on Sunday, and for a few things. First of all, he's moving the building farther away from his neighbor to the side, which is a good thing. The views from the, um, the, the neighbors to the left, the, there's a fence there. It, as far as visualizing this building between A, B, and C, there's not a lot of difference in my mind. Uh, all he's doing to go from A to B to C is shortening his yard. And his driveway to park his car, his, his vehicle, just fits on that, I mean, he is right to the road. And so, for me, for, when I consider the costs and the efforts to do this, I would, I would prefer the B that gave you more vehicle storage, just so you, your driveway now is padded. So, um, I, I would be okay with approving B tonight, but I agree with Marty, it should be gone through formally.
Andy, by adding B and, and the extra 40, it's gonna take off the, the lawn itself. You said he's already taken eight percent of his, I mean?
Yeah, so.
Like a new addition, and adding, what, would that bring it up to about 12% by going an extra four feet?
I don't know the percentages off the top of my head, but yeah, so right now, with A, they would be, they would be over the maximum lot coverage by eight percent, so this would push it up to, yeah, 10, 11, 12, or something like that, so.
And then you're gonna go from 272 square feet over.
Correct.
That number just keeps, right?
Yeah.
But that changes all the variance review standards.
Yes, it does.
If you change the plan that was presented, I don't, I'm not gonna, I wouldn't be comfortable approving anything that, uh, doesn't have variance review standards attached to it, that's the point of this board.
Correct.
And the point of Andy working hard to get them to us.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, I just, uh, when I talked to Kimball, there was some confusion on which version to submit. And you submitted A, um, except, so I guess it's up to you, if you, how strongly you feel in which design you want.
Do any of you really have much issue with an additional four feet?
Well, I would probably look at having a table of this as we speak, and you'd have to come back with Plan B, following Andy's recommendation, so you'd have to make that decision. Tonight, we, we would discuss A, so if you wish to table it.
That would push us off another month, is that correct?
That is probably yes. I don't know when you were planning on construction or destruction first.
Get this, get this off.
Yeah, so.
You gotta understand that Andy, Andy directs us in the direction that we need to be in, right? Because this is what he does for a living, so, um, like I'm planning, we take what Andy has to say very serious, and we pay close attention to it. You submitted A, unfortunately, you didn't submit.
A and B, and Susan gave, in all fairness, it was at the 11th hour, but Susan said, you wanna submit two of these? And I knew that we're like, at the end of the day, on the last day, I could submit. And I would have to change documentation to be able to do that, so.
But I'm willing to discuss A.
Yeah.
If you wanna do something different, then unfortunately, you have to come, you know, Andy has to go back through. We need to know what the square foot, uh, increase is gonna be, and what the percentage of the yard, right? So, because then, my, my concern is, is if you're having an outbuilding out there like that, and you're gonna have heat, and you're gonna use it as a woodshop, and you're gonna have all these things, um, you know, now I think if you're gonna increase it by four feet, uh, I would like the fire department to weigh in on it, too, right? As a, to make sure you do have enough separation between the house and the, and the outbuilding.
Well, that I know I do, um, per the city, per the standards, I worked with Sue on that, so that, that part is.
The thing is, it's for your family and for your forever home, so you wanna ultimately be happy with whatever one you choose. I don't want you to feel like you're trapped in choosing A just to get it done tonight, but if you're willing to wait, I mean, I'd be happy to look at a variance review for A, B, and C.
Okay, do I, would I have to resubmit all the fees and all that again as well?
That's another straight question, I don't know.
If it's additional ru, review, there's probably an escrow cost, but I would say that we probably don't need to file another zoning fee.
Well, we have to redo the public hearing, I would say.
Well, that's right, yeah, because you're increasing the intensity of the building. So, someone who had no objection to A might have an objection to C, so I, you know, you can't just ratchet up the intensity without redoing the hearing.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, I know I'm good with immediate neighbors, but 300 feet in all directions, I certainly don't.
So, do you think they vote, or do you think it?
Well, let me ask you this. If we vote for A, and whether we approve or disapprove, then you, you have the approval for A. You guys can go home and say, this is the choice for us, we're gonna do it, if that's the way we go. If, if you guys decide, you know what, let's submit another one, then you submit another one, and we do it all over again, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So we can go through it.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
Let's do that, then.
Right, that way, that way we're going through, we're having the conversation, we know what buildings look like, we know where we're at on A. If we don't approve, then you know where you stand.
Yeah, then you know B probably is a full one.
That, that way we're not wasting a whole month for a no. That can be a potential answer, so, I think that's better use of needles.
Smart.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, let's do that. Alright, let's do with A. Um, I guess we, we start with the variance, then there, there's six things that we have to consider. Andy, do you wanna start with, um, section 20.04-B, number one? And then?
Yes.
Do you wanna vote on these as we go, or at the end for all six?
You have to meet them all to be approved, so.
Correct.
I mean, if we vote no on two, I don't want, you would.
That's correct.
Is that right, Andy?
Yes, so.
All the standards.
Couple of things I wanna mention before we get started, is that, um, I think before we, we go through these, you should open a public hearing, accept any public comments specific to this application. Um, and the other thing I guess I would add, as far as the size of the building is concerned, are the option A, B, and C. So I did speak with the applicants, uh, for quite a while about each of these. I sort of suggested that they go towards option A, because, you know, when we're asking for a variance, right? They're asking for something, or to do something that doesn't ordinarily comply with its own laws. So, so typically, from a zoning perspective, and as a planner, we would say, ask for the, the least amount of variance that you need maintenance work, and to get something done that, that you wanna get done. So, that's not to say that they couldn't apply for, um, something larger, but typically, as a planner, we would, we would advise them, and advise you frankly, to sort of grant a minimum relief necessary for them to accomplish what they want to accomplish, which is why we sort of urge them towards, um, Plan A. Uh, so with that, I think, yeah, if there's, if there's any public comments on the request, we should hear those first, and then we'll go through the six standards.
Uh, any public comments regarding?
Um, Perry Beecham, where we reside at 924 Riverside Drive, so I'm in the neighborhood, I'm not exactly right next to them. Um, I would be, I, I'm just saying, as a neighbor, I'm in favor of, of variance. Um, they keep, they keep a nice presentable house, their yard's presentable, um, they continually do improvements. I saw the stump was gone this week, this week, um, and this allows them to, you know, because we do live on the river, or next to the river, we don't live on the river. Um, but, you know, everybody has kayaks and their things, and you have some places to store them. And again, it gives a place for, for them to store that equipment and, and other things. So, as, as a resident that lives in that neighborhood, I would be in favor of the variance. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Then we'll close the, uh, public comments, and back to you, Andy.
Alright, thank you. So, 2104-B, in your zoning ordinance, walks through the variance review standards. So let's kind of summarize each of the standards, one at a time, as we go. And then, Jim, did you say that you wanted to vote on these one at a time, or just go through all?
We'll go through one at a time.
Okay. So the first one, um, is that you define that there are exceptional or sure, extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question that do not generally apply to other properties in the same district, such as narrowness, shalliness, or shapes of the property, exceptional topographic conditions, um, the use of development or property in case into which, where a little enforcement of requirements is in order to put in all practical difficulties. So, basically, we have to find here, there's something unique about the, the property itself, whether it's topography, or the shape of the parcel, or, or, or something like that. Um, so here, you know, this is a, a, a very small lot, it's actually legally non-conforming for your R2 district. It's smaller than, um, what your R2 zoning district allows today. Um, however, there are a bunch of other properties in that district that have, that have a, a somewhat characteristic. Um, we, we do think that the, you know, the age of the home, and the, you know, the fact that the basement's pretty small is something that's a little bit different about this house, that might be, you know, not something that's shared by others in the neighborhood. Um, you know, I don't know the exact layout and the floor plans of every house in the, in that vicinity, obviously, but that's, that's the other, I think, most unique thing about the property, would be the fact that it is pretty small. It's smaller than what's ordinarily allowed in R2. Um, and if there is a very limited storage in that, in that building, um, you know, that is something that, that might be a bit different. Um, you know, on the other hand, we are looking at a lot that is small, but most of the properties in that area are also pretty small. So, um, it's up for the board to decide whether or not that is, is unique enough to warrant a variance from the standards.
Offhand, do you know what the percentage of, the covered percentage would be if it was a conforming lot?
Um, if it was a conforming lot, I think the minimum area is the 400 square feet, so.
I didn't put you on the spot, I'm just.
So right now, that property is 70, I thought I had it written down, it's, it's like 7,000 square feet-ish. So if this were a conforming lot, it'd be 8,400 square feet, so it'd be about 1,500 square feet bigger, the parcel would. Uh, that would make the building, as they proposed it, probably conforming in terms of, um, both the size, in terms of lot coverage, um, and it'd be really close to not complying in terms of the actual square footage as well.
Same with the additions, too, I would imagine, right? Would take the percentage down if it was the original, original household, no additions.
So, the, if you, if it was the original house with no additions, that would certainly change the lot coverage calculation. It wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't change, um, the overall maximum limitation for accessory buildings, accessory, on the lot area, on the size of the house.
I believe the house has been added on to it a couple times over there, over, over time.
Is it three?
Over the last hundred, since 850.
Yeah, there's some sections where it's just like, oh, you have wire through there? How would you do that?
He's got a unique lot shape, too, where, you know, it's on an angle versus a nice rectangle, so that affects a little bit, too.
Well, on the non-conforming and the housing additions, I'd move that standard form being destroyed, maybe.
Yep, I, I agree. Rest in board.
Agreed.
Okay, number two?
Number two is that the condition or situation for which the variance is sought is not so general of a nature as to make reasonably practical the formulation of a general regulation. That's a very lawyerly way of saying, does this come up so frequently, frequently that we should just amend the ordinance to fix that? Um, you have seen a couple of variance requests over, over the last few years, uh, that relate to the size of accessory buildings. I don't know that, e, even given that, I don't know that I would necessarily want to amend the ordinance to address it for a situation like this, or those. Because you'd be amending the ordinance in a way to, um, you know, allow for larger buildings? And the important thing I've learned over the last 20 years about accessory buildings is that they're never big enough. And so, I don't think that's gonna solve the problem in terms of how many requests to be. You're always gonna get in one or two or three a year, like you do now.
Right.
For stuff like this, and I don't personally think that, um, that amending the zoning ordinance would be inappropriate around the year.
And I thought that G drag one was a non-conforming lot, too, right? So it seems to be the common lots, or you have a problem.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, please.
So, so based on that information, I'm in favor of that, that we made the question for number two as well.
So forth.
Agreed.
Okay, number three, Andy?
Number three is that the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property, right? Similar to that possessed by other properties in the same district, and the possibility of increased financial returns on that of itself, you know, to be sufficient for a variance. So basically, this is saying, are they going to be denied some property, right, that everyone else around them gets? Um, you know, here, they, I suppose in theory could build an accessory building that was just smaller, um, that doesn't, you know, meet their needs, obviously. Um, and so, you know, I, I think it's, this is kind of a tricky one, because we have, um, you know, the fact that they, they probably could construct a compliant building, but because they have a, a, a very small lot, and they have probably the same amount of, you know, stuff that everybody else has, that they would want, want to store in there. Um, you know, again, the small lot size like you found for number one may be something that also impacts number three. There are some other, uh, accessory buildings within this area, a lot of homes had detached accessory buildings. Just, um, looking at the aerials, it looks like there are several others in the area that are, I'm pretty sure, larger than what would ordinarily be permitted in the zoning ordinance. the zoning ordinance as well. So they wouldn't be alone in having something that's a little bit bigger than what's ordinarily permitted in that district.
Based on the same standards as number one, I would, if that number three was also met?
I agree on the wire, except that meets as well. Say yes, Jim. Number four?
Number four is that the variance will not be significantly detrimental to a decent property in the surrounding neighborhood. I don't think that's going to be the case here, it's a little bigger than what's ordinarily permitted, but I don't think that what they're asking for would be a significant detriment. I think the word significant there is important. And then, in addition to that, and this also gets into number five a little bit, is that their current building is not compliant, based on the aerials, it actually looks like it might extend onto their neighbor's property a little bit. So the fact that they're going to be taking the old one down and putting up one that actually meets the two or three foot setback there, I think that actually, it helps in that instance.
Yeah, I think it's going to help the neighborhood if you don't have the trailers out there anymore, you have the part of guests coming, not street parking, so there are a lot of things that I saw, and your neighbor was definitely in favor of moving forward with it, too.
And everything else they've done on that property has been to the betterment of the neighborhood, not just of the...
Yep, so I would say four meets criteria as well.
Support.
Okay, number five?
Number five is that the variance will not impair the intent and purpose of the ordinance. So again, here with number five, we mentioned the same non-conforming issue, that, you know, you're kind of treating a whatnot compliant issue for a different one, right? So this new building would meet the setbacks, but now it would be a little bit too big. You know, overall, I don't think that's doing a lot of harm to the zoning ordinance in and of itself. And the fact that they're asking for what I would consider to be a pretty modest amount of variance, a couple hundred square feet, also, I think, helps with the fact that this isn't going to do significant harm to the zoning ordinance as well.
In their original merit, they had mentioned that they did the least amount of...
Correct.
...variance needed. So based on that, I would argue that number five would be met.
Then number six is that the immediate practical difficulty causing the need for the variance was not caused by any action of the applicant, so they do this to themselves, which they didn't because the house is a hundred and fifty years old or something, so yeah, both the lot and the house, you know, are predating the applicant's actions here, so I would not consider this to be a self-creating hardship.
There's always the easiest one.
It is.
They weren't here a hundred and fifty years ago, so that standard isn't met.
Yeah, so I agree that that should also be maybe the criteria. With that...
I make a motion that we approve the variance request for eight ten Riverside Drive. Design number A is presented.
Would you also want to include the condition that Marty mentioned earlier?
Yes.
Not the condition that it's not turned into a...
Correct.
Okay, amended.
Well, we'll, I'll look for somebody to support.
I'll support.
Vote, please, Sue.
Board member for...
Yes.
Board member Barkis?
Yes.
Board member Chambers?
Yes.
Board member Groves?
Yes.
And Chair Salzweedl?
Yes. Board's commission, anything to say, honor?
No, sir.
Okay, House comments? Anybody? Nope. Mike, since you always have me on the...
I move to adjourn, the zoning board of appeals at seven thirty-four P.M.
All right, we need to take a couple minute break, and then we're going to...
Yeah, perfect.
Thanks.